Good day, ladies and gentlemen. This is same test 1 or 2 class. So today we're going to derivative as limit of rate of change. We're going to derivative as limit of rate of change. So we are, these are the contents. These are the contents under the derivative as a limit of rate of change. Where we have definition of differentiation as the rate of change. Definition of differentiation as a rate of change. Differentiation of a given function from first principles. Differentiation of rational function from first principles. And differentiation of integrial function from first principles. So this are the contents we are going to look into under this a topic. Now, let us have the definition for differentiation and also derivative. Differentiation is the process of obtaining the differential coefficient. Is the process of obtaining the differential coefficient of a given function. Why derivative is? Is the differential coefficient obtained from that function? That is, the differential coefficient obtained is called the derivative of the function. Now this is the learning outcomes. It is by the end of studying this section, you should be able to differentiate a given function from first principles. Differentiate rational function from first principle. Differentiate trigonometry function from first principle. Define differentiation as the rate of change. And also solve some examples on differentiation. Let's go on. Now, we want to know what is called differentiation as the rate of change. The definition of differentiation as the rate of change. Let y equal to f of x be a given function of x. Let y equal to f of x be a given function of s. If s is increased by some small increment, say changing s. And if we write changing y for the corresponding increment in y, then we have this expression here. Let's look at it. y plus changing y equal to f of x plus changing s. That is the small increments in y, this changing y, and the small increments in s. You have anything there? Now make a changing y the subject of a formula. Changing y will equal to f of x plus changing s minus f of x. Then, the next line is, we now have to, we have to divide both sides by changing s for us to get a changing y all over changing x, which is equal to f of x plus changing s minus f of x all over changing s. Then we now take the limits. The limit of, where we have the limit that changing s approaches zero, of the issue changing y over changing s, derivatives of y we transfer to x. That is the derivatives of y we transfer to x. So that is the definition of differentiation as a rate of change. That is the definition of differentiation as a rate of change. So let's now, okay, we have seen, we have made mention of this. We've gotten the definition of differentiation. So it is just written here. We may use any of the symbols below to denote the derivative of a function. That is, all these symbols where we have changing y over changing s, comma, f prime of x, comma, y prime of x, comma, d over d s of f of x. So they are all symbols that denote the derivative of a function. So we can use any of it to denote the derivative of a function. Let's go on. Now we move to differentiation of a given function from first principles. Differentiation of a given function from first principles. Now we're looking into this from this example. Obtain the differential equation of y equal to 5x minus 3 from first principles. So I believe you know what is called a given function. The y equal to 5x minus 3 is a sample of a given function. So we're going to look into this now. We want to differentiate it from first principle using a first principles method. Now let's look at the solution. Let's changing s be a small increment in x and changing y be the corresponding increment in y. Then we have a y plus changing y equal to 5 into x plus changing s minus 3. You know, where you have y, you had that small increment, which is changing y. Where we have 5x, we also had that small increment in x, which is changing s. So that is why we are having it in this form. That is the first line here. y plus changing y equal to 5 into x plus changing s minus 3. So we now make changing y the subject of formula. So bring it, changing y to one side, which is equal to 5x plus changing s minus 3. Then we take the y at the left hand side to the other side. That is why we are having minus y because the sign has was changed. So this minus y. We now have a changing y equal to 5x plus, you are going to open this bracket, use 5 to open the bracket. Then we have 5x plus 5 changing s minus 3 minus, what is y? Where we have been as value of y, it is 5x minus 3. Then we replace y as what? 5x minus 3. And expand this with, the 5x will go with 5s and 3 will go with 3. So we are left with 5 changing s, but then we have changing s. So therefore, we're going to divide both sides by changing s. So we start with dividing both sides by changing s. So we are left with 5. Therefore, the derivative now is equal to 5. That is, changing y over changing s will be equal to 5. Now take the limit, take the limit. The limit as changing s approaches zero, changing y over changing s is equal to 5. Without that, putting that limit, so you have not done anything. So that limit as changing s approaches zero must be written there. So by the time you got it as this, that is limit as changing s approaches zero, changing y over changing s equal to 5. Then you now got the, that is the answer. And you can as well write it as the y over the s is equal to 5. It means the same thing. So that is how to get, how to obtain this differential coefficient of y equal to 5x minus 3 from first principles. So let's go on. Now we move to the second illustration. Look at this example 2. Differentiate y equal to a s raised to power n. This a not equal to zero from first principle. So let's look at this solution. We add the small increments in s and also small increments in y as changing s and changing y respectively. Then y plus changing y will equal to a into s plus changing s all raised to power of n. All raised to power of n. Therefore, the next line we have, we take changing y now to the one side. Then we now have a changing y equal to a into s plus changing s all raised to power n minus a s raised to power n. Because y has come to the other side and it becomes, it became zero there. And you know, the value of y, we now input it, which is a s raised to power n. We input it, it becomes minus a s raised to power of n. So that is why we are having that changing y equal to a into s plus changing s raised to power of n minus a s raised to power n. So on expanding this now, using the binomial theorem, we obtain changing y equal to a s raised to power n plus a n s raised to power n minus 1 changing s plus a n into n minus 1 over 2 factorial x raised to power n minus 2 changing s raised to power 2. So this is the expansion using binomial theorem. This is all what we have done before. So if you want to expand it, if you want to get the next step now, you know, we stop at, at 2. At least raised to power of 2 here. If you want to get the next one, you can have it as a a n into n minus 1 into n minus 2 all over 3 factorial x raised to power n minus 3 changing s raised to power 3. So that is the next one. None, 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 none like that. But we are limiting ourselves to where we have this. We stop at changing s raised to power 2. So and the next step, we're going to divide both sides now by changing s. Let's divide both sides by changing s. So we are left with changing y over changing s equal to a n s raised by n minus 1 plus a n into n minus 1 over 2 factorial x raised by n minus 2 changing s. So that is what we are having there. So the next line now, we're going to take the limit, to take the limit of changing y over changing s. Where we have the limit as changing s approaches zero equal to a n s raised to power n minus 1 plus a n into n minus 1 over 2 factorial x raised to power n minus 2 dot 0. That is multiplied by 0. You know that where we have changing s, we're going to replace it with a 0, you know? Changing s approaches zero. Make it zero there. So that means, when you apply this value by 0, it finishes. So we now have a limit as changing s approaches zero, changing y over changing s equal to a n s raised to power n minus 1. Hence, we can also have it as what? The y over the s equal to a n s raised to power n minus 1. That is, that we have gotten the derivative of y y equal to a s raised to power of n. So we've gotten that. So now, let's look at this. Where we have the derivative of y equal to s raised to power n as what? N s, s raised to power n minus 1. Know if you are differentiating directly, y equal to s raised to power n, so you have n s raised to power n minus 1. And if you are differentiating directly as, where given y equal to s raised to power 8, you have it as the y d s equal to a. It's a s raised to power of 7. But if you are to differentiate from first principle, so you are going to apply the process we've been following. So that is that. Let's now move to another subtopic there where we have a differentiation of rational function from first principle. Differentiation of fractional functions from first principles. I believe you all know what is called rational function. Know rational function? What are fractional function? So if I'm looking at this illustration here, where we have differentiate y equal to 1 over s from first principle. 1 over s is written as fraction. So we now want to differentiate it from first principle. From first principle. Look at the solution. We have a small increment in y and also small increments in s. Now have y over changing y equal to 1 all over s plus changing x. You know, taking changing y to one side, then we have a changing y equal to 1 all over s plus changing s minus the y, which is 1 over s minus 1 over s. Now from here you get, take the LTM of it. Let's add the LTM. The LTM of it now will give us s into s plus changing s. That's the LTM. Then now, s plus changing s goes in it. So we are left with s. So s multiplied by 1, the denominator there, we get s. And also, when s goes in this, then we are left with s plus changing s. So that's why we are having it as minus s plus changing s there in brackets, which is equal to, we now have it as minus changing s over s into into s plus changing s. Because s has cancelled there and we are left with minus changing s. So minus changing s at the numerator all over s over s plus changing s, where we have the denominator there. So in this line now, we now want to divide both sides by changing s. We divide both sides by changes. By the time we divide both sides by changing s, you know, we are going to have changing y over changing s, which is equal to minus 1 all over s into s plus changing s. Now we now take the limits. We take the limit of it. So you must check the limits because we are treating derivative as limit of rate of change. So you must check the limits. So we now have it as limit as changing s approaches zero, changing y over changing s equal to limit as changing s approaches zero minus 1 all over s into s plus changing s, which is equal to minus, that is, 1 over s into s plus 0. Where you see changing s, you just replace it with a 0. You know, changing s is, it goes towards, goes to 0. So you have used, substituted that 0 there where you have changing s. You will now have the answer as minus 1 over s raised to power 2, minus 1 over s square. So that's the answer there. That is the derivative of y equal to the differentiation of y equal to 1 over s. We have gotten the derivative there. As is the y over the s is equal to minus 1 over s square. So now move on to another subtopic again, which is differentiation of trigonometric functions from first principles. Differentiation of trigonometric functions from first principles. Now we want to recall this. Recall from trigonometry, where we have sine a plus sine b equal to 2 sine a plus b over 2 cos a minus b over 2. Then b we have sine a minus sine b is equal to 2 cos a plus b over 2 sine a minus b over 2. Also, we have cos a plus cos b. The outcome is equal to 2 cos a plus b over 2 cos a minus b over 2. And d is cos a minus cos b. And the product and the outcome there is minus 2 sine a plus b over 2 sine a minus b over 2. So while recalling this is because on treating this, we are going to make use of the one that is relating, the one that is related to what we're going to use. So in this example 1 now, we are asked to find the derivative of y equal to sine s from first principle. Derivative of y equal to sine s from first principles. Let's now look at the solution together. Let's changing s and changing y be increment in x and in y respectively. Now, we now have it as y plus changing y equal to sine s plus changing x. Then taking the changing y to left hand side, then we have a changing y equal to sine s plus changing s minus sine s. Looking at it here, you will see that we have that s plus changing s, you know, in brackets. So it is sine s plus changing s minus sine s. Maybe let's just represent that s plus changing s as a. Then let's represent s as b. So we are going to apply, we're going to apply the, that trigonometric formula in b. The, the, they are both very slight, you know? We recall some trigonometry formula there. So the one we are having in b, that is the one we are going to make use here. Is the one we are going to make use. Where we have a, where we have a sine, sine a plus sine b, oh, sine a minus sine b, I mean. Where we have sine a minus sine b is equal to 2 cos a plus b over 2 sine a minus b over 2. That is what you are having in b there. So that is the formula we are going to make use of. So now here, when we use that with what we are having here, we now have it as changing y equal to 2 cos s plus changing s over 2 sine changing s all over 2. Because by the time you're substituting into this inside, changing s over 2, you know? So s has already cancelled there, so that we are left with a changing s over 2. So the next line now, we have changing y all over changing s. That is, we divide both sides by changing s. Divide both sides by changing s, we have cos s plus changing s all over 2 sine changing s all over 2, everything all over changing s. But for us to have it as this, we want to eliminate what we're having as 2. The coefficient of cos there. We want to get rid of it. So we now divide both, maybe, we now divide both the denominator and the denominator and the denominator by 2. If we divide it by 2, you know, we are going to get rid of that coefficient, which is the coefficient of that cos there. And we now have a changing y over changing s equal to cos s plus changing s over 2 sine changing s all over 2, all over changing s over 2. So that is what we are going to get. Now looking at this, for us to take the limits now, let's take the limits of what we are having here. Taking the limit as say, changing s approaches zero, changing y over changing s will be, will be, we are going to, we are going to make use, we are going to recall, we are going to recall from what we have studied. That is, a limit as theta approaches zero, sine theta over theta equal to 1. You can recall, we have done that. So you will see that this one is just like that, what we're talking about. At this sine, changing s over 2 all over changing s over 2. It's just like when you are having a sine theta all over theta equal to 1. That is, you are taking the limit of it. You are taking the limit of a sine theta over theta as a theta approaches zero is equal to 1. So it's just like this. So when you take the limit of sine changing s over 2 all over changing s over 2, it's going to give us 1, is equal to 1. That is why by the time we were taking the limit here, we got 1. So we now have a limit as changing s approaches zero, cos s plus changing s over 2 sine changing s over 2 all over changing s over 2 is equal to cos s plus 0 and multiply by 1. Multiply the whole thing by 1. That is, that one is the answer we got from sine changing s over 2 all over changing s over 2. That is, by the time we took the limit as changing s approaches zero, it gives us what? 1. So that is what you are having there. And if you open it, multiply it, we are having cos s. We are having cos s. So that is the answer. We have gotten the derivative here. That is, the y over the s is equal to cos s. So it's equal to cos s. So we have done that. That is how we go that. And ordinarily, if you want to, if you want to get the, you want to differentiate sine s, you know, can easily say is equal to cos s. Well, how do we get that cos s? So these are the processes, these are the processes we use, we use, we apply that we can arrive at this solution. So the solution is cos s. We have gotten the answer as cos s. That is, the y d s is equal to cos s. And we now move to the next example. The next example, where we have find the derivative of y equal to cos s from first principle. Find the derivative of y equal to cos s from first principle. Now let us all look at this. We are differentiating y equal to cos s from first principle. We are differentiating y equal to cos s from first principle. Now the same procedure, the same way we did the other one, where we have y equal to sine s. So it is the same method we are going to use here. Just follow the same process, step by step, then we arrive at our answer. Let's go on. Let's take the small increments in s and y here. We now have y plus changing y equal to cos s plus changing s. Now the next line, we may change y the subject of formula. Changing y will now be equal to cos s plus changing s minus cos s by the trigonometry formula, by the trigonometry formula. You know, this is, this is trigonometry formula. Think is, is either B, C or D. You can check. So this is not B really. It is not B, but when you check from the above slide, then you check the one that is related to this. And the one that is related is cos a minus cos b is equal to minus 2 sine a plus b over 2. two sine a plus B over two, sine a minus B over two. That is the one that is related to the one we are doing here. So, that's why we are having this one as change in y equal to minus two sine s plus changing s over two, sine changing s all over two. So, we now have it divided by changing s and also get rid of these two, the coefficient of sine. Then, it's just the same way we did the other, and we arrive at minus sine s plus changing s over two, sine changing s over two over a changing s over two. So, we now take the limit, taking the limit of it, then we have eh, minus sine x minus zero multiplied by one, you know? When you take the limit of sine changing s over two, all over changing s over two, as changing s approaches zero is equal to one. So, that is what we are having there. And the answer is equal to minus sine s, the answer is minus sine s. So, we have done that and we have gone to derivative, you can write it as the y, the s equal to minus sine s, equal to minus sine s. So, we have come to the end of today's class. Thank you. Thank you for listening. See you next time.